I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Scott is Skyping in.
Present in spirit.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar, we have the agenda for today. Are there any comments or additions or corrections? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. Comments, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment? Don't see anybody? Okay, regular session. City of Lebanon Audit, Dean Baugh, Finance Director.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to our auditors, this is Glenn and Cora. They did their new audits we had to hear from Acuity that you hired in the spring. So this is kind of a fun audit because each other auditors were here for 20 years. We had a new set of eyes. It was kind of fun to think the new things they looked at were the things we found. So I'll turn it over to them to walk you through the audit.
My name is Glenn Kearns, I'm one of the partners with Acuity, and I'm going to walk you through the financials. I'm going to be somewhat brief, but if you have questions, please feel free to stop me and I'll answer the questions as best as I can. The first thing that you will probably notice is that in your packets, those actually have three sets of financial statements in them. There are separately issued financial statements for two of the component units of the city, which is required by both the state and by the Government Accounting Standards Board. One set of financials is an audited set of financials, the other is review, and those differences are just based on the dollars basically that flowed through the entities. It requires different levels of service. Not intending to go through those in detail because the information is included in the city's financial statements, but again, if you have questions, please stop me and I'll do my best to answer your questions. So if you want to flip open the set of financials just past the table of contents, this is our independent auditor's report. Basically, this is what you've hired us to do is come in and give an opinion on the city's financial statements and financial condition. And as in prior years, the opinion on the financial statements is an unqualified opinion, also known as a clean opinion. I always like to make sure that when we use the term unqualified, that we explain what that means because accountants tend to think differently than the rest of the world. And when people hear unqualified, that sometimes has negative connotations, but in this case, that's a good thing. So it means that in doing the procedures and the audit over the city's financials, we didn't find anything that would cause us or require us to qualify our opinion for any reason. So that's the opinion that you're looking for, and you've got it again this year. Back behind the auditor's report is management's discussion and analysis, and this is basically a brief section which is sort of management's year in review, if you will. It's information that's provided by management. We look at it, make sure that everything reconciles back and forth to the financials, but it's management's ability to include some information which really is not part of the financial statements themselves, it's a little more informative and descriptive and those sorts of things. So I'm going to kind of skip by that and get into the financials themselves. So if you want to flip to page 11. Page 11 is the statement of position, and I want to bring something to your attention if you hadn't already noticed. There was some new standard that came into play this year, so there's been some changes in terminology with regard to the financial statements. In previous years, this statement used to be called the statement of net assets. The GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, in its infinite wisdom, decided that statement of net position was a better description of the statement and so forth. So everywhere where you have seen net assets in the past, it will be called net position. Exact same thing, just different terminology. So basically, the statement of net position is a fancy name for the balance sheet, for those of you that are looking, used to looking at for-profit statements and so forth. It is an indication or a snapshot of the assets and liabilities and equity of the city at a point in time, of course, that point in time being the city's fiscal year end at June 30. So some of the key areas that most folks will focus in on is the first subtotal there called total current assets. And if you look at that line item, you're going to see that for the city as a whole, there was about $6.5 million of current assets. And those are assets that are very liquid. It's cash, receivables, those sorts of things that are intended to be collected within the next 12 months. Below that are the restricted assets, and those are assets either cash, receivables, those sorts of things that have specific external restrictions imposed upon them, either from bond covenants or those sorts of things. So they're assets of the city, but they have to be used for specific purposes, which is why they're reported the way they're reported. And then the very last item before the total assets at the middle of the page is your capital assets or all of your infrastructure, buildings and equipment and property and those sorts of things. And obviously, that's the largest asset of the city is your property and equipment and so forth. So at June 30, you had just a little over $73 million after taking into account depreciation, accumulated depreciation on those assets at June 30. One of the ratios that most folks will look at, especially the financial people, bankers and those sorts of things, in looking at the balance sheet is what we call the current ratio, which is basically a comparison of the total current assets of an entity to its total current liabilities. And what that ratio is designed to do is give an indication of an entity's liquidity. Most bankers and financial analysts and so forth like to see at a minimum a current ratio of 1 to 1. They prefer 2 to 1. Anything above that is pretty much gravy. I think I ran the numbers before we came, and I believe the city's current ratio at June was about 1.71 to 1. So that's good. It means that you have enough current assets to pay all of the current liabilities that are going to become payable within the next 12 months. So that's a good thing. If you look at down about 2/3 or 3/4 of the page, you will see the, in fact, actually on this page, the total liabilities of the city at June 30, including all of the long-term debt and so forth amounted to about $42 million. So while that number may seem quite large in the grand scheme of things, it's in line with expectations and those sorts of things. Flipping over to the next page, this statement normally fits on one page, but given the size of the city and those sorts of things, it basically, the equity section carried over onto this page. So what you see on page 12 is basically the net position or the equity of the city at June 30. And so you'll see for the governmental activities, which are all of the general operation things, you had equity of about $23, almost $24 million. And your business-type activities, which are your utilities and those sorts of things, had equity of about $27 million for a total of about $51. So again, these numbers were in line with what we would expect given a city of this size and complexity and so forth. So nothing really unusual or out of the ordinary there. Flipping over to the next page, this statement is called the statement of activities, and it's basically, again, just a fancy name for the income statement. It shows the revenues and expenses of the city for the fiscal year ended June 30. So for the 12 months ended June 30, these were the revenues and the expenses of the city. The statement is a little unusual in its presentation for those of you that are used to looking at an income statement. Normally, an income statement flows top to bottom, income and then expenses and net income and so forth. This statement reads basically from left to right and then from top to bottom. And the reason that the GASB put this format into play is that it's intended to give the users of the financial statements an indication as to whether the primary activities of an entity, a government, both from a governmental activities and a business-type activities, whether they are self-supporting. So you'll see in that first column that those are the expenses for each of the various activities or departments of the city for the year ended June 30. And as you go across to the right, you're going to see various types of revenues, charges for services, operating grants, capital grants, and then you're going to get to what amounts to a net revenue or a net expense. And it's those right-hand columns that entities and users of the financials will focus in on to see whether a government is self-supporting. And as you'll see from the governmental activities, the city is not self-supporting, which is not unusual. That is not atypical. It is the norm, given municipal operations, because without the general revenues that are listed on the bottom of the page, property taxes and those sorts of things, the general operations of a government couldn't survive because you rely on those property tax dollars and so forth to fund your general operations. What you will see, though, on the business activities, which again are your water, sewer, and storm drainage activities, that those entities are actually self-supporting, which again, that is a good thing because you don't always see that in some municipalities, even some cities, given rate structures and cost structures and those sorts of things. It is not unusual for some business-type activities to be funded or supported by the property taxes or general revenues and so forth. So the fact that the city, that its business-type activities really are self-supporting is a good thing because that's the point. That's the reason they're operated the way they are is because they're supposed to sort of operate like a for-profit business and therefore pay for themselves, which they do. If you scan to the bottom of that page, the third line from the bottom, that's sort of the key number that folks will focus in on, and it's referred to as the change in net position, which again is just a fancy name for the net income or loss for the year. And what you will see at the total city level, that there was a positive net income of just a little over $200,000 for the year ended June 13. And realize that that number does take into account non-cash expenses, primarily depreciation and those sorts of things. So that's after those non-cash items. So you will see that the governmental activities, there was a negative net change, if you will, a loss for the year ended June 30. But again, that in and of itself is not unusual, given the nature of operations and the things that the city had going on during the fiscal year. So it wasn't anything that caused us any undue concern. Flipping over to the next set of financials, these two facing pages are, again, just another balance sheet presentation of the governmental funds of the city. And it's basically just the same information that was presented on the very first financials are presented here. The basis of accounting is just a little different. So there are some things on the first statement like debt at the governmental level and capital assets that you won't see here because it's a presentation issue that the GASB requires. These statements are prepared on what's called the modified accrual basis as opposed to full accrual, for those of you that know what the difference of those things is. It's a timing issue generally. The general fund, obviously, which is the major operating fund of the city, is probably where most folks will focus their attention here. And if you look at that column, again, what you will see is that for the year ended June 30, the general fund had total fund balances of about $750,000. So again, given the size and nature of operations and so forth, that's a reasonable number, given what the city does. Flipping over then to the next financials, what you have here, this schedule is a reconciliation, basically, or a roadmap, which kind of explains how you get from the very first government-wide or city-wide balance sheet, if you will, to the balance sheet that we just looked at, the governmental activities. And it reflects the differences, if you will, as to what things are on the first statement and not on the second. Things like the capital assets and accumulated depreciation, the various debt and those sorts of things. So if you're ever unsure as to what the differences are, how we get from point A to point B, that's kind of what this schedule does, is sort of walk you through those numbers. The next set of facing pages, again, are the, it's a statement of revenues expenditures of the governmental activities. Again, just a fancy name, basically, for the governmental funds at the modified accrual basis level. And again, what most folks will focus in on this statement is the third line item from the bottom, the change in fund balances for the year. And what you will see is that for the general fund for this fiscal year, there was a negative change in fund balance of about $251,000. So basically, what that means is that at the modified accrual basis level, you had more expenses than you had revenues by about $250,000. So that in and of itself is not anything that, you know, should cause users or you as the council any undue concern. If you see that sort of loss continuing on a multiple-year basis, then obviously, there would be some issues because that's an indication that you're burning down or burning through your fund balances. But again, given kind of what the city had planned and so forth in this year, it's not unusual. You will see that number fluctuate from year to year, given types of operations and funding sources and those sorts of things. The next page, again, is another reconciliation schedule, which again, just gives you kind of a roadmap between the income statement at the modified accrual basis level to the income statement at a full accrual basis level. And you can kind of see some of the differences. Again, they relate primarily to the capital assets, the depreciation, the purchase of assets, the sale of assets, debt payments and so forth. So again, this is really just a roadmap, if you will, to get you kind of from one set of statements to the other. Page 18 is, we're kind of back to the balance sheet, and this is the balance sheet of the proprietary funds or the business-type activities of the city. And these statements are basically identical, just in numbers, but the format is a little different because for this level of reporting, your business-type activities are reported on these statements the same way they are at the government-wide level. Because they're intended to operate like a business, for this level of statement, the Accounting Standards Board says use full accrual accounting even at this level. So the numbers that you see on these statements are basically the same that we kind of looked over at the very first statement. I'm going to kind of flip past those two statements and go to, on page 20, this is probably one of the most important financial statements in any given set of financials, but in my opinion, one of the statements that is the least understood. It's the statement of cash flows. And basically, what this does is show the user of the financials where the cash came from and where it went. And this statement relates specifically to your business type or your utilities. But what you're going to see and what you want to focus in on in looking at this statement is as you scan down through the various categories, cash flow from operating activities, for example, that first subtotal there, net cash provided or used by operating activities, that's a key indication as to whether an entity, or in this case, your business-type proprietary funds, are generating enough cash through their operations to basically pay for those operations. And as you can see, they were $6.7 million to the good. In other words, they're generating sufficient cash flow to pay for operations and so forth, which is what you want to see. Because as that number goes negative, or as that shrinks or potentially goes negative, those dollars have to come from somewhere, and they come from potentially either borrowing or some of those sorts of things. So that's a key indicator that those utilities and so forth are being operated on a very prudent basis. So the key item here, or one of the key items, again, that folks will focus on is that third line item from the bottom, which is basically the net increase or decrease in cash for the business-type entities for the year. And for the year ended June 30, you'll see that there was just a little over $500,000 of increase in your cash balances for the fiscal year ended June 30, which again, is a good thing. That number, again, will fluctuate from year to year depending on what types of things the city has going on. But what you don't want to see is you don't want to see a continuing, ongoing decrease in your cash balances from year to year because obviously, at some point, the kitty goes dry and then you're kind of up a creek. The next facing page is really nothing more than a reconciliation of the operating income or loss to that very first subtotal that we have, the net cash provided or used from operations. So it's, again, just an indication of how you get from the net income from an entity to the cash that was provided by its operations. Back behind that statement, there's a one-page statement of fiduciary net position, and basically, this is just a statement that's required to show any assets that the city holds in a fiduciary capacity. They're not your dollars, but because you have responsibility for them, they're still required to be reflected in your financials, and that's what this statement is basically intended to do. Back behind the statements, then, we get into the notes to the financial statements. And basically, the notes to the financials are nothing more than additional information, narratives and descriptive information that support the numbers and the amounts that were reflected in the financials that we just went through. I'm not really going to focus in on any particular area. There are a couple of key things that are listed in the notes. On page 32, for example, this is when we look at your budgetary process and compliance and so forth. If there are issues, this is an area where we're required to disclose that. And you'll notice that there were several funds and several categories where the city was over-expended. In other words, the city spent more during the year than it had approved appropriation authority, which is, A, a violation of Oregon law, and B, not a good thing because it's just an indication that there is some lack of oversight, for a better, you know, lack for a better term, in monitoring those dollars on a month-to-month basis, making sure that you're not spending more than you're technically authorized to by Oregon law. The other reason why I usually make sure that we bring that to the board or the council's attention is that there are statutes on the books in Oregon, although in the 20 years I've been doing this, I've never seen it enforced. But there are laws on the books that basically say that if you have over expenditures, if a municipality has spent more than it is authorized, and enough constituents file, get upset and file a complaint with the Attorney General, the Attorney General will conduct an investigation. And if there is reasonable cause found to say that this was preventable, you folks sitting here could potentially be held personally liable for those over expenditures. So it could, from a theoretical standpoint, hit you in your pocketbook. Again, I've never seen that enforced, but it is on the books, and it is a possibility. So you just need to keep that in the back of your mind. Probably the only other issue in the notes that you need to be aware of is at the very, very end, on page, or pages actually, 52 and 53, there are a couple of new pronouncements that are coming into play that will affect your financial statements and the financial reporting for the '13, '14 fiscal year and beyond. And the first one is listed on page 52. Basically, it is a change, this accounting standard, GASB 65, is a change in presentation for certain types of things that used to be classified as assets and liabilities on your balance sheet. The GASB is now saying, we want you to reclassify those and call them something else, basically. And so when we present next year, you'll notice that there may be some differences in the way things were presented. So that one isn't as big of a deal as the one that's on the next page. GASB 68 is the one that's really going to cause some heartburn for municipalities, really, across the country, not just in the state of Oregon. And basically, excuse me, what this GASB is going to require is that the city of Lebanon, like every other municipality in the state and in the country, has a defined benefit pension plan, PERS. Associated with that pension plan, there are liabilities for future benefits which have always existed. Everyone knows that these liabilities have always existed. They've just never been reflected on the face of the financial statements. This standard is now going to require that unfunded actuarial liability to be reflected and recorded on your balance sheet or your statement of net position in future years. The impact of that, of course, is going to be potentially a dramatic change in your equity when that comes into play. Because if, for example, you have a $10 million unfunded actuarial liability and $50 million of equity, as soon as this standard becomes applicable, your equity is going to shrink by $10 million because we have to pick up and put this liability on your books so that it's there and it's reflected. So it will have a dramatic effect on everyone's financials, not just the city's. There still is some confusion or lack of information as to the process for implementing this. The PERS board and GASB and the state of Oregon are still working through where all of that information is going to come from. We believe that the actuaries that are, Milliman, that are doing the actuary evaluations currently will provide all of the necessary information to both book those financials as well as disclose all of the appropriate information in the financials, but they haven't finalized that yet. So as we know more, you will know more, but we believe that that will be the process. But be aware that this is something that will look substantially different from past years and will have a dramatic impact on financials because it is something that's never been there before, even though everyone knew that this big gorilla was in the room. So that's probably the biggie that's affecting most municipalities as we move forward into the next couple of years. Back behind the notes to the financials are just the required supplementary information. These are the budget-to-actual reports, which is probably more similar to what you at the council level are used to seeing on a month-to-month basis. And these are statements that are required to show the revenues and expenses on an actual level compared to whatever your adopted budget was for the year. And this is where those over expenditures that we discussed previously would be identified. And those statements continue on basically through page 65. And then behind that is just some supplemental information, debt schedules showing the debt to maturity for all of the various long-term debt obligations that the city has outstanding. On 68, there's a schedule of property tax transactions that kind of show your property tax assessments, the collection for the year, the receivables that you had on property taxes at year end and so forth. At the very back of the financials is a secondary report that is required by Oregon law. It's the independent audit report on Oregon minimum standards. So this is where we're required to report on the city's compliance with various Oregon law requirements, things like budget law compliance, indebtedness, you know, were you in violation or did you have too much debt, those sorts of things? Did you comply with the public contracting and purchasing rules and those sorts of things? For the majority of those areas, the answer is yes, the city was in full compliance. If you flip over to page 70, you will note the two areas of noncompliance that existed for this year. We've already talked about the over expenditures. The other item that's noted there was a noncompliance issue related to public contracting and purchasing. And this apparently was just an oversight at a departmental level where the required number of bids that should have been required, they didn't get the required number as they should have. And so we had to note that it was technically a noncompliance issue, although I don't see that being a systemic issue. As we looked and did our testing and so forth, the controls and the processes that you have in place are pretty good. This is just one anomaly that we found.
Staff has changed.
Oh, and staff has, thank you, staff has already changed the process to ensure that this sort of thing shouldn't happen in the future. So that issue has already been addressed and resolved. Okay? So I know I went through that stuff pretty quickly. In a nutshell, that is the city's financials for the year ended June 30. Does anyone have any specific questions on other areas or just general questions?
I have a couple, three.
Yeah.
Very familiar with your cured process. Would you talk a little bit about the modified? You mentioned that.
Oh, modified accrual accounting?
Yeah.
Basically, the primary difference between modified accrual and full accrual is a timing issue. On the expense side of things, there really is no difference between modified and full accrual. The modified accrual things generally come in in relation to the revenues. On the full accrual basis, things are recorded as revenue when the revenues are earned, regardless of when the dollars are actually collected. So when you bill me, that's a revenue on the full accrual level. On the modified accrual level, there is something called the period of availability, which says that you count as revenue, monies that you have collected, plus other items that you may collect or you anticipate collecting within the period of availability, which for the city is 60 days after year end. So on the modified accrual, we basically pick up the cash that has come in the door plus the amounts that they think they're going to get within the next 60-day timeframe.
Okay.
So it's a timing issue primarily.
All right, thank you. Second question, what percentage of depreciation is being used now for the equipment in terms of, on an annual depreciation value?
Well, the city calculates depreciation on a straight-line basis based on the estimated useful life of each individual asset or asset class. And that varies from asset to asset. So to give you a percentage would be difficult to do, but if you look at page... So to, to, to give you a percentage would be difficult to do, but if you look at page 40, it will show you the depreciation expense that was taken for the fiscal year at both the, for, for the governmental-type assets.
Yes.
As well as for the, the assets in your proprietary business funds, your water sewer and storm drainage. So for the governmental activities, there was about $3.5 million of depreciation expense for the year. And for the business-type activities, it was just a little over a million dollars.
I guess what I was looking for, there's not an, a set rate that's applied to a specific?
There's not. It's based on, it's a straight line. So if you have, if you have an asset, like infrastructure stuff, roads, streets, those sorts of things, they have a specific life. And so, for example, if, if it's a 50-year asset, you basically have 1/50th of the value, the cost of that asset, which is depreciated every year.
That's what I was.
If you flip to page 28, that, that's, there's a little schedule there that shows you the various asset lives that the city is using for its various assets. So, and those are standard, those are fairly standardized from entity to entity, although most municipalities will tweak that to some degree and, and maybe use a little different life. There isn't a, a hard and fast rule. There are guidelines, is what I'm saying, on, on what lives you would expect to see. But that's a management estimate. When, when an asset is purchased or an asset is constructed, management looks at that and says, we think that asset is going to last X number of years. And we look at that estimate and say, we either agree or we disagree with, with how long you think that's going to last. And so as long as we don't have any issues with the lives that they're using, we recalculate the depreciation and make sure that it's, it's accurate and appropriately presented and so forth.
And my last question is around the over expenditures.
Yes.
Historically, we've had those on an annual basis. And staff has brought that to council for approval to move or shift dollars to accommodate that particular line item. And tell me, are you saying that's still illegal to do?
No, it, it, that process is what should be happening. When, what should be happening is that, that management and the, the council should be monitoring the expenses as you go throughout the year, looking at your actuals compared to what your authorized appropriations are. And when it looks like you're getting close to your authorized threshold in any particular fund and any particular category, and it's not, you're not yet to year-end, there should be adjustments that, that should be made to the budget. That's what's done via a resolution appropriation transfer that is approved by the council at a normal meeting and so forth. What those over expenditures mean is that even though there were resolution transfers, appropriation transfers done during the year, the city still ended up spending more than those adjusted appropriations for whatever reason.
Good.
And I will say, I will add that one of the, one of the games that municipalities sometimes try to play, although we didn't see that necessarily with the city, is they try to correct potential over expenditures at year-end by doing resolutions and sort of fixing the problem after the fact.
Yeah.
The problem with that is that both state law and, and accounting stand, auditing standards say you, you can't do that. Oregon law specifically says that as soon as you spent more than one penny over your authorized expenditure level, you're already over expended. Even if you try to fix it with an appropriation transfer, you're already in violation. So the point of that is that, yes, you need to monitor as you go throughout the year and make sure that there are budget modifications that are happening so that you prevent those over expenditures in the future.
So how does one, say, staff runs up against a, an over expenditure that's coming, that we visually can know is going to happen? Is there a timeline or a window that that resolution has to be?
It, it just has to be passed and adopted before you cross that bright line. So before you spend that one penny more than whatever your, your cap is, you've, you've modified your budget in some form or fashion, either through an appropriation transfer, potentially a supplemental budget. Somehow you've changed that appropriation authority so that you have now more working room for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. You were mentioning the fund where, you know, hey, we're down 200,000 and it's not necessarily alarming unless it's a trend. And I would like maybe five or 10 key ratios that we should be honed in on as a, as trends that we could ask, you know, staff to bring us twice a year that goes back five years. Here's where we come from, here's where we're going. 200,000, maybe, you know, is that, is, are we going up? Are we going down? How do we, how do we do that? I would like a list of.
And, and I think staff probably has those. There are some generic financial analysis ratios, both on the, the asset side and income side, and if not, we can provide those. The, the fortunate thing, I guess, in all of this is that in looking forward into the 13, 14 fiscal year and beyond, it appears that, that management and is going to submit a, the financial statements are going to become more robust, I guess. They're going to become, there's more information that's going to be presented because there, the city is going to send financials off to request a, a CAFER, Combined Annual Financial Report, which goes off to the GFOA for review. And if you, if you pass the test, so to speak, then you get a certificate that you can put on the wall that says, we've met all of these additional reporting requirements and so forth. Part of the information that is required under a CAFER are things that you're, exactly the things that you're looking for. There are additional supplemental schedules, trend schedules, those sorts of things which will be presented in the financial statements themselves next year. But those information, that information can also be presented on an interim basis throughout the year. Because the management and staff is the one that's going to have to start working up all of that information. So they'll, they're going to be in that process, I think, anyway.
Well, those have peer comparisons or in a, in a municipality, I work in a financial institution, so we do a lot of peer comparison. To, to be able to tell, hey, everybody's kind of having problems with interest rate spread right now, that's just a given. And so that our trend is going down is not alarming. But, but will, will that play in at, at that level?
There won't be industry comparisons in the CAFER, but that, that is something theoretically that staff could do for you. I, I will say that that information may be less useful than what you're used to seeing on the for-profit side. With municipalities and nonprofits as well, the industry comparisons can be somewhat skewed because even though they, they are all sort of doing the same sorts of things, they're in different regions of the country, different operating factors. So while you can get those statistics, trying to compare yourself to another city.
Of like size.
Even within, even with the state of Oregon, it may, some of the ratios may, and comparisons may be misleading.
That was, that's basically my question, is, is it even fair in a municipality? And it may not be as fair as what I'm used to seeing.
It's probably not. Probably the best thing that, and we recommend this for municipalities and nonprofits, is to compare yourself against yourself. And that's where those trend averages in, in looking at and preparing a set of ratios and those sorts of things. And looking at that on a, on a five and a 10-year trend average, that will provide you much more salient information than trying to compare yourself against the city of Corvallis or the city of Springfield or something of that nature.
Well, and so watching fund balances over the years, especially the general fund and your enterprise fund would be a key. But also budgeted revenues against actual revenues each year, which is in your budget document. And, and the same thing for expenditures gives you, as a council, a tool to look at to say, are, how are we doing when we're budgeting? Are we way overestimating what we think we're going to get in or are we actually underestimating? And being conservative is okay, but if it's affecting operations in your budget, you know, so as a council, if you're watching fund balances go down, down, down in your key funds, your operating funds, your enterprise and your general fund, you have something to be concerned about. But if they're staying steady or if they've gone down in a year and then you've watched them come back up through grant funding or smaller projects, you know, then you can watch that. But the, the revenues against budget is also key because it, it gives you an idea of how you're doing it with fiscal management year to year.
And I, I want to be fair. I think, I think they are providing us that at a, at a larger level. But I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed. And, and really, I just, I want a recap of, you know, I want four pages of graphs. Okay, we're doing good, we're not doing good. I mean, not that I won't look through this too, but, you know, what I'm going to, what I'm going to get from this is going to be limited compared to just.
Yeah, the statistical section that you'll get in the CAFER document is exactly that. And, and so I think you'll, you'll really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question, Paul.
Go ahead, Barry. Go ahead, Barry.
On the management letter, so it's got a couple of references to the use of internal control, the limitations to that use during the audit. Could you elaborate a little bit on the extent and basis of your reliance on internal control during the audit?
Absolutely. So in general terms, we, we, we do rely on entities, in this case, the city's internal control, in developing the, the processes and procedures that we're going to apply in any given year for any given audit. And so we, we documented, we evaluated the, the city's controls in, in designing the, the tests and so forth that we were going to use in this year's audit. And as part of the testing, that's where the, the two items that are noted in the internal control letter were identified. And I, I actually was getting ready to address those. In addition to the financial statements that you will receive every year, there, there normally are two additional communications that come to the governing body. The first of which is the internal control letter that he just referred to. The other is a letter that's called the communication with those charged with governance. And it's basically just a letter that, that lets us share with you as the council, how did the audit go? Did we have any disagreements with management? Were there any problems and so forth? And in general terms, there really weren't any major issues in, in the performance of the audit. On the internal control side, there were a couple of things that, that we identified that we had to, A, disclose to you as the council and B, that, that management needed to address. And I think in, in both of these cases, the solutions have sort of already been put in place. The first item or internal control issue that you see there is a, an item that we identified as part of our testing in that there was some debt related to the Samaritan Health Services arrangement that, that they have with the city that goes all the way back to 2009, I believe, that had never been reflected on the city's books. Both the, the assets that, that are sort of tied to that debt and the related debt itself were never reflected on the city's books, which, given the dollar amounts that we're dealing with, in our opinion, caused the statements to be materially misstated. And that's why it's disclosed here is because had we not included that information in the financials, in our opinion, this year's financials would have been materially misstated. So it's one of those things that, you know, we just want to make sure that sort of thing doesn't happen in the future and that all, all debt and obligations of the city have been identified and, and appropriately reported and those sorts of things. So the other issue kind of is tied to debt, if you will, and it's really just a, it's kind of a paperwork thing in, in to a certain regard. But one of the, the debt agreements that the city has, has a, a loan or a debt covenant tied to it that says that the city will present certain information to the, to the, to the debt holder within a certain timeframe. And that, that required report did not get submitted in, in a timely manner as required. The issue was subsequently remedied and, and basically signed off on by the, the debt holder. The risk that you run when you have that type of a loan, as you know, and when you have a debt covenant violation, what that basically does is give the holder of that note the authority, if they so choose, to call the debt, which is bad. And you never, you never want to, you know, to, to let that really become an option. So that's, again, why it's, it's listed as a significant deficiency because had, had the debt holder decided they really wanted to play hardball, it, it could have put a crimp in the city's operations in having to come up with or re, you know, redo financing or something to, to fix that problem.
And to take that one step further, this was actually the second time that had happened. It didn't happen last year, but the year before. The window for the reporting was quite short. I think it was only 90 days. So your, their, your management was just done getting ready for audit at that point. And so your finance director, Dean, asked that they extend that out to 180 days. So you have until December 31st to report. And the lender agreed in writing to do that. So they really have remedied, hopefully, that situation so they can submit audited financials in the future. So.
Did that answer your question on the internal controls?
Yes, I think that's good.
Okay.
And just that last on the budgetary non-compliance on the letter, that was what you were discussing earlier about things being overspent?
Correct, yes. And, and part of the issue, part of the reason it's, it's listed in, in the management or the internal control letter, in addition to being disclosed in the financials, is that while this is the, the first year that we've done the audit, we've noted obviously that this is not the first year where there have been over expenditures. And usually when we come in to do an audit, if there, if there's over expenditures, we don't get too upset or uptight about it, so to speak. But if we see that this, this appears to be sort of an ongoing issue, then we tend to ramp up the, the severity of the communication, if you will, because it, it's important to us and obviously it, it should be important to you because, again, technically it could hit you in the pocketbook if someone really wanted to play hardball. So.
Any other questions?
No, but we do have people in this town that want to play hardball sometimes. I do want to know that we got that all remedied.
Thank you, Glenn and Corey. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dean, would you like to come up and do a little summary?
Do you like to do an audit?
What, what was the question?
Did you like the new audit?
Yes.
Your presentation?
Very pleased.
I think they were very comprehensive. That's a good presentation.
I'd have a fresh set of eyes.
It was, and that's why I was saying earlier, it was nice because some of this stuff is like, oh, we didn't pay this merger bill since 2011, then the first bill was due, but nobody bought them. We can do this, pay that after. We've been presenting it, right? So they're like, oh, you're supposed to do this half too. Thank you. So that's the thing here, we've got things in place now to take care of that. We've got Marathon Oil, that's reported, that came up this year. We'll do the same thing. We've got to report back to the same way. It's another economic dividend, but that's served a lot of years. We start this year, so that one, we'll get that reported. But I don't think, I just take on a dividend, let them back 90% of the taxes. So we've got things in place now to take care of this. The over budget, we have a new boss in town that he's really been on that.
On over budgeting? Hopefully not.
Over spending.
Ah, gotcha.
So we're working really hard with our directors to ensure that they don't overspend. So we're, we're working on that now, we're a lot more looking at. There will be a something on the budget come up in January to take care of a few things. And we'll need to look at that after the course of the year, we'll do a second one or something in the fall. So yeah, we've got to look at that for the course of time, we're putting up the records, trying to stay on top of that, we'll do. And the important side of this is, is we've got some big capital things coming up here in the near future. You know, we want to keep our pilots here. We've got a water plant, bond coming up, hospital city, hall project coming up. We're looking at needing to keep on top of all this, keep our bond rating up, hopefully keep our bond rating up, I mean, get it up higher if we can. Because the higher we get it up, the cheaper our debt financing is. So we're working on top of the things they found, making it in place. One thing you're going to see in the next couple of months is we're bringing back, we've rewritten or updated a lot of the city's financial policies. So we're going to engage you with those. I think there's about 20 different policies we've rewritten and the managers will review them now. So I think we're letting those back in January to review. I don't know if we'll pass them then or discuss them and then bring it back in February once we can, once we guys get a chance to look at them. So we're going to engage you with financial stuff and that type of balance stuff to go through this. So you're on top of some internal controls and the rewrites and the screw-up changes. We've worked on those for a while and now it's finally done. So, so I think it was nice, they locked the tension, they turned back on our toes, you know, when your auditors are there for 20 years, you kind of picture the same every year. This kind of like, oh, they want to look at this. Oh, okay. So it was fun. Kept starting out active all the time.
I have never had fun in an audit, so I think you must be lying.
Well, we're, we're weird.
It's stressful.
Oh, no, you gotta enjoy it. So, so if you have any questions, if you want to come by and talk about the audit any time, keep, keep the top of the counter. The audit any time, we can go combine with the crew. If you have any other questions to come up later on, we're going to talk to you anytime.
I do have a question. What specifically do we? What specifically do we have in place now to prevent the over expenditures from happening so that we know about them ahead of time?
We're sitting down, you know, the directors, they get a report every month by the, you can use that one as a template for them to review where Dana's put in place. Way in form to law, they have the, and the way we budget, the directors are responsible for bottom lines. So, if we give the library $100,000 to spend, she can spend $100,000. You know, the line items are there. Dana has kind of said, that's fine, bottom line's your goal. But he doesn't want to see you over budgeting any line. So, if you're going to move budget in training, he wants to see a memo come in and say, I'd like to move some money from here to here, make sure that line's okay throughout the year. And ordinary law doesn't allow us to move money within an apartment without coming back to council, so laws don't change that bottom line. So, these are who you should change it. And so, we're attracted more by the line item versus the bottom. You know, they're still helping the bottom line, but we're holding more to the individual lines, too. So, they can't kind of say, oh, over $10,000 here. Yeah, I think I got the money elsewhere. No, no, no. Show me where the money is elsewhere. You know, we don't want to say, oh, look, you didn't have $10,000, you're over now. So, we're kind of holding it a little tighter for right now.
That's good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I may, I just want to applaud Sarah and Dean. You know, I've been through a lot of audit processes in other organizations. Incredibly smooth, well-prepared. The two of them did an excellent, excellent job running through this audit. And I know Dean keeps pointing to Sarah, but the reality is, it's the two of them, as well as all the people in their department that provide the back cover support so they can really break free for the audits. And just to emphasize Dean's point about what I consider a subtle shift in our budgeting philosophy, it's really kind of shifting back to managers, the empowerment to be responsible for their budget and not just think of it as a big lump sum, as long as they're generally okay, it's okay. They're more accountable for what they're doing. It also gives them a little more freedom, but also an increased amount of responsibility.
Good. Thank you, Dean and Sarah. You guys did a good job. And we appreciate the acuity work, too. Are they still there?
Thank you.
Should I make the resolution for approval of the audit, acceptance of the audit? I will open up once, if the council approves the audit now, I will have it on the website by tomorrow.
Okay, do I have a motion for the resolution? Oh, you read the resolution, please?
Yep. Resolution number 2013-38, a resolution accepting the City of Lebanon Audit Report for year ending June 30th, 2013.
Move for approval.
Say it.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 2013-38. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, Dean. Agenda item number two, city manager evaluation process.
Okay.
Debbie.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie. I work for the city in the HR department. It's my pleasure to be here and answer any of your questions and share with you the process that we will be doing for the city manager evaluation. You received in your packet samples of city manager evaluations for other cities. And so, what we're going to do today is we're going to discuss those forms and listen to your recommendations of the ones that you thought were, would be useful. We also have, I passed this form out, and this is a set of standards. And I listed the ones that Lebanon used in the previous city manager evaluation in 2011. And then, the samples also are illustrated here. And one of the things we'll need to do is to determine what standards we want to use in the evaluation. And each city normally uses between eight and 11, somewhere between there. And so, we will select the standards, and then, in the memorandum, we have listed the timeline for the evaluation to take place. So, with that said, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to share?
I was wondering what prompted us to redo the, about, it's been, was it 2011 we went through this, and we went through like two or three, maybe even four meetings, and just hammered that out, you know, section after section after section, and what was important and what would we value and what did we, when was that? We just did that.
Yeah.
And I didn't understand why we were doing, why are we doing this again? Is it just because it's a new council?
I asked for it.
You did?
I did.
Good God.
Well, because I haven't been through an evaluation, and I want to see what our previous one was. That was what I'd asked for, and then some examples of others.
All right. As long as I know who to blame. I'm like, what the heck? Okay.
Doesn't mean that we have to throw out what we have. I just want to see what we have and what we used, because I haven't been through the process before, and I know there's a couple of us that haven't, so...
Well, I agree with Rebecca. We spent, and have over the years, a number of times evaluating evaluation forms. And quite honestly, I'm quite tired of it, but there are, there are no answers to an evaluation form in terms of total satisfaction. But I'm willing to listen and learn and...
And now you know who to blame.
Yeah.
All right. Let's do this thing.
And this first one is the one that was used last time? Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Personally, I would like to recommend using the format that was used for the Klamath Falls, because in that particular evaluation, if you would turn to it, the sections... They're in which order?
They're in alphabetical order.
Oh, they're in alphabetical order in the back on your packet? Klamath Falls. Is that the one? Is that the one? Okay. Klamath Falls is divided into the different sections, and it allows you, under each section, it gives four or five statements, and you score each statement. And then, at the end, you're, you can add comments. And the score, the grading scale is one to five, which I think is good. Grading scale of one to three is pretty restrictive, and sometimes it's, I think it's more beneficial to have a one to five grading scale.
I got to say, I did like the way the City of Lake Wales, when they, because it's always hard, is it a one, two, three, four, five? I liked how they, how well they defined that, you know, outstanding, that's going to apply to 1% of the people possible. That you're, you know, it keeps you kind of from making everything rosy. I mean, anybody who's done 500 million evaluations, you know, you tend to say, oh, yeah, he's good at that, I'll mark it a six.
I like the form, I like the structure of Lake Wales. It's, it looks eas, it's easier to make, to score. I do think the standards are limited. One of the standards is quantity quality. So, I like the structure, but I don't like the standards that they selected. So, we could, we could use this format, and then, if you selected, wanted to keep the standards that we used in the previous evaluation, we could use those, or we can add or take some away.
Debbie, if I might ask, if we used the current standards and applied it to Lake Wales, would that satisfy your wishes, or...
Yes.
So, current standards, but one through six, and kind of go, do the same kind of...
One through five?
Or one through five, but, but give it, give it a little bit more, what does, what does one mean to you? What is, as a council, what does two mean? What does three mean? And, and kind of what is your expectation to achieve?
The City of Lake Wales...
They only use eight standards, correct?
We can use eight. The City of Lebanon used 11 previously.
Yes.
If you want to use those standards, but the format for Lake Wales. Also, on the Lake Wales example, it gives a description of what outstanding is, what excellent is, what very, one through, they have one through six.
Yeah.
We would change that to one through five.
I really do kind of like the definitions of each one.
Beg your pardon?
The definitions of each one, I think is a positive thing.
They're explained right here on the sample.
Yeah, I have them, I know.
Okay.
I'm saying I like that.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I do like the 10 areas that we have on the, on the City of Lebanon one. I think those 10 areas are good. I didn't see the 11th one.
Yeah.
Maybe she was just mistaken, but the 10 different areas, the supervision, leadership, execution of policy, community relations, administrative duties, economic development, governmental relations, city council relations, and planning, and financial management. I think that, from looking at all of them, that pretty much covers the areas. And then, maybe you guys are thinking using the City of Lake Wells, the actual format of that one.
The thing I like about Lake Wales is they define what is a one.
Yeah.
Would it, you know, what is, in their example, what is a six? Well, 1% of the people are going to get a six.
Yeah.
Because it's, they pretty much say a six is impossible unless it's just blow your socks off, you know? Five, excellent, you know, is going to be your top 5 to 10% of the people. I just like how they, how they kind of estimate that and make you a little more comfortable saying, instead of saying, you know, you have a tendency to say, yeah, he's pretty good at that, all right, I'll give him a five, instead of really kind of defining what a five means to us.
Okay.
I just like that part. But, again, I think we kind of broke into a subset of council to hammer through and kind of get a, get a general feel, and then, there was a subcommittee last time that, that kind of went point by point and said, and kind of meshed some things together, and then brought that final product back to council.
Does anybody have a problem with the questions on, that we have from last time from the City of Lebanon?
I do not.
Because I think they look pretty good.
Yeah.
Can we, will we step outside of this at some point and discuss the actual process? I'm a little...
Yes.
Just a little hazy. Okay, that'll come later.
On the timeline?
Yeah, I'm looking at the timeline now and...
What we'll do is, based on your recommendations for the format, I'll go back and put together the evaluation, and then I'll get that to you by...
It'll come back to you for the January 8th meeting so that you can adopt it and make sure it's exactly what you want.
And if you accept that, then it'll be distributed on January 10th, and you'll have approximately three weeks to conduct the evaluation, meet with city manager for any questions you might have, and then you'll come back, you'll submit your evaluation to the city clerk on February 3rd, and then, you'll have executive session on February 12th to discuss the evaluation. And then, on March 12, or March 12th, you'll meet with the city manager and present your evaluation to him.
I don't know if this has been done before, but I would like to see an opportunity to not only meet with the city manager, but I would like to meet with the department managers as well to discuss the city manager. I don't know if that is inappropriate.
I can speak to that. As far as this timeline process, for those of you who have been on council for a while, this is the same process that you used 2011. I believe that's when it was. And as far as individual, we did that last time, too. The individual counselors would meet one-on-one with the city manager. As far as, I think last time, 2011, is the first, to my knowledge, that department managers also had an evaluation form. And I believe that's in the packet as well.
Is that the 360 that's in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and we can, we can always speak to that as well, if you'd like to have any of those questions changed.
Is the plan to have that done again, or...
I, that's totally up to council. That's up to council, not up to staff.
I would like to see that done. I think it's important. Our interaction with the city manager is often limited to council meetings or brief encounters with just him. So, I think to get more of a global picture, I would prefer to see manager input, city or department manager input as well, and/or even a scheduled meeting for them to interact with us. But I don't know the logistics of that, if that's feasible.
I was going to ask, what format would you suggest?
Well, if you, there's the, there's their form here that, no, I don't mean form, how to get, how to get us together, I guess, is the question. Like an executive session kind of a thing, or... That would be one option, or a one-on-one meeting would be an option, but I don't know how, that, now we're talking about a lot of time with them.
Right. I believe, and maybe Rebecca and Wayne, you could correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, I believe what it was is the city managers, or excuse me, the department managers received the evaluation, they turned it in to, I think, maybe a HR, I think it'd go through city clerk's office at this point. And then, and then that was brought to the executive session for you to review. The department managers weren't at the executive session.
No, they weren't. Okay.
I don't remember that being a, I don't, maybe it's just me, I don't remember that being a part of the process.
Yeah, we did do that, though.
It was.
Rebecca.
Is that compiled for us, or do we actually go through, or someone?
However, however you'd like to review it, we can give it to you exactly as is. Before, it was compiled, but it was said exact, it didn't say who said it, but it, it gave question one, these were all the answers, instead of you going through each evaluation form.
And I don't think it's important to know who said what, as long as we can see if the trends are the same and...
At that time, we kept, in the executive sessions, I believe the composite was that it was, rather than counselor Bolan said, the composite was inter, you know, not interviewer, but evaluator, number one, evaluator, number two. So, that the focus isn't on what counselor said what, but the focus is on the city manager's evaluation and rather than on who said what. Same with the department managers. We'd probably, unless you, I would recommend that we keep that.
Anonymous.
Anonymous.
I would go even further, and I don't think it's necessary to put evaluator one, two, or three, but just list the comments.
The comments, and as long as everything's there, I don't think, I don't really care. It doesn't matter who said it.
I think it's just easier doing that as far as record keeping, did I get their comments?
I agree, though. I, I like having department managers be a part of the process.
Do we limit it to department managers, too? Or do we, I mean, there are others who are not department managers who work with the city manager. Is that, is that appropriate, or is that not appropriate?
I personally would recommend just department managers, especially at a six...
Seems like that's just a can of worms.
Especially at a six-month eval.
Yeah. It's a lot of people.
There's something to that idea, I think, of finding some mechanism for that input.
There are a lot of options for 360 evaluations, like Survey Monkey, where you can do evaluations and you identify what type of stakeholder you are, if you're a citizen or you're an employee or a department head.
I think this one was pretty good, actually. I mean, this, you know, I glanced through this, this one, and it hits all the hot buttons, so, and it gives them an opportunity to make a comment. And if they don't want to comment, they don't want to comment and, but they have an opportunity to comment, so.
So are we in agreement to move forward with these questions with the format from that other city? Is it Wales?
So if I understand correctly, we would need to put another timeline in here so that the city, or, excuse me, I keep saying city, the department managers also...
Could participate in some way.
Right. So we would need to have that back by a certain time, too, but...
I like that.
We can bring that, all of that back to January 8th with the approved form.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
I do.
Okay.
I just wanted to publicly express some thanks and gratitude to a couple of our departments. This recent snap of cold weather, the snow, I think our public works department, specifically Frank, friends on his crews and Jason Williams and his crews, did a phenomenal job of getting ahead of the game on this and being prepared and really limiting liability out there. They did a wonderful job. I think that also ties in with our PD a little bit. They're out there functioning in that environment. It's not very pleasant. And I think they did a fantastic job and deserve a little bit of recognition for that. Side note, I responded to a broken water pipe call on one of those snowy days and we had a hard time locating the meter of the street because there was four inches of snow and where's the meter? You know, we're playing the where's the meter game while 20 gallons a minute is flowing into this person's apartment. And so I called our dispatch and asked for Lebanon Public Works and they were there in about two minutes and quickly located the meter, got the water shut off, which was a huge help to us. And so I think it's great to see agencies working together like that and, but without, without that great leadership that we have at those department levels and great crews out there doing it in the bad stuff, it just doesn't work. So they did a great job and I just want to express that publicly.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yeah, one in regards to the recognition lunch. I think that was a well-thought-out and well-presented, I wasn't physically able to attend this year, but I've had positive feedback and staff did a good job in recognizing the employees and much appreciated, I'm sure.
I would like to actually call out Jamie Bilyeu and Debbie Schimman because they did an excellent job putting it on.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
You, yeah.
And Dean's son and the, wasn't it the jazz band?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did a great job playing. Very good.
Yeah, that was awesome music.
Very nice.
But we're glad you didn't sing, Dean.
Yeah, thanks for not joining them.
Anything else from council? Any citizen comments? Seeing none? Meeting's adjourned.